Yeah, he's. He's here.
Don't want the kids.
Yeah. It's gonna start. Make sure. Yeah, make sure.
Mary, how you doing?
Really hard working from home with three little kids. No matter where I go in the house. Yesterday ended up being a beautiful day, but I was like, you know, we left the house.
The pictures of the building, the lights look nice. We're both having that. And so we need to all have our three all the time. John, I feel like Kumble is gonna go long for you anymore.
I know, it's kinda weird, isn't it? Yeah, it's strange.
They got you holding up. Great, have stress induced max bathroom, those just started a couple days ago, that's really exciting. Yeah, looking forward to that.
I bet you are.
I literally put your name tags out for you. My brother lost. There's nothing wrong. But I can act. You're not. He said, "Very well, Dave, I'm fine."
Good evening, we're here today on March 26, 2020. We are gonna call the Committee as a whole, due order at 6:45 this evening. We do not have any approval of minutes. We do have all council members here present at the Committee as a whole. The first business item we have, of course, let's say we're streaming this meeting, so just so everybody knows, we need to speak clearly into our microphones. We try not to speak over each other. We touched it this earlier, but we just wanna make sure everybody can hear what we're saying. So make sure we're speaking clearly and into our microphones. The item we had on the Committee as a whole agenda was establishing of a 2020 Budget Oversight Committee. I think we all know, we're kind of in a time of crisis right now, we've talked about our budget a lot in the last several weeks. And to know whether we are actually gonna hit those goals, to keep an eye on the revenues coming in, and to talk about priorities going forward. We feel that creating a Budget Oversight Committee would help have a little more insight to that, to work closely with the administration. I know Mr. Costello sent his report to all of us, and said he'd be happy to work with us to make sure, as we move forward, we're working on this. I brought this up to Mr. Peronick the other day when we spoke also. I think it's just trying to get everybody on the same page to talk about our priorities with this budget. So, we had the legislation presented to us, and I would like to make a motion to move that on to council.
Don't move.
All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
So that will be on tonight's council agenda. We do not have any other items on the Committee as a whole, so we will go ahead. Oh, yes. Even type it down, Mr. McIntyre. Our clerkless pillars cannot be here tonight, so we need to appoint somebody to serve as clerk of council. So I will make a motion for Mr. McIntyre to serve as clerk of council for us for the evening. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
No, abstentions. Mr. McIntyre, you will be clerk of council this evening. Anything else for the Committee as a whole?
We do adjourn.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. We'll wait until seven to start, and we'll see if anybody wants to log on, if they log on.
He should stop. Yeah.
I haven't plucked this. Junior high school, but you see step blocks, the bad man. And only because I can show my whole, or that, that I can show all my steps, that's why I plucked. I plucked that twice now.
Have your own. Yeah. It's not a fun thing. Yeah, all the half. I'm working on it. Because I go back, I take the sample questions and stuff. I feel pretty good that I go back, that's the simple, not forget what I learned.
Why answer the same questions to that? But, you know, I can hack off, I don't wanna look at it for a couple days. I'll get to it again tomorrow.
All I believe about this, we're supposed to stay out of the way, we're in the poll, don't talk to you. And you can say, "That's why they do that." Okay? And it's all about, so that's why they do it that way.
Yeah.
That's the whole person.
Maybe if I was higher than the rain, I could say, "I'm not a saint."
There's some early. 304. It's so bad.
Not so much the distraction.
But, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's. It's been pretty.
So I called my buddy up because he's a parent, he called me good, and I think he's not even like the frog.
Well, I'm just letting you know.
All right, I appreciate that.
We're in fact able, we have to.
We're not on a definitive timetable, however, we'd like to, we'd like to have everybody. When we apply for our federal grants. Our federal grant has actually been applied for, but they.
Going on.
So everything got put back. I could say, "How could you?" A good shelter in place type of, you know, excitement.
The thing is, you know. What I love what we're at. I'm glad.
Training over the years. And so. I was like, "Oh, now I'm..." I had a lot of. No form from that. Better whole.
Yeah, that's pretty.
Fire. I think that might be five. Yeah, so.
So I did. Of course, that's just sort of. Same thing to pretend. You know. I'm catching up to the track. I spent more time. I never. I think it's. Yeah, it's. Yeah. It's a nice day. I live in.
I'm waiting for brass. Well, interesting.
He called me this guy.
Right now.
Yeah, that's it.
Your wife. I guess.
Yeah. I'm happy. I'm married. Oh, I'm here to die. I'm here to die. I don't know anything. It's, yeah, I remember, I think after I graduated. I was looking for a couple years, I feel like. He was on. And then. We should. Point out, you see. You're.
But you have the order, right?
He's young. I, yeah, I've got a chance to write it. Actually, no, I've seen him around, because I've seen him walking back and forth, so. So I have to write tomorrow. Yeah.
I saw him.
I'm assuming he's. Yeah. So, yeah.
Well, yeah. I was. But they can see. I got pregnant.
I was never. Have to hear. And it's. Every year, your fortune.
Good evening. We're gonna call to order the March 26, 2020, Stowe City Council meeting at 7:00 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Hyler. Here. Mr. McIntyre. Here. Mr. Autieri. Here. Mr. Fioka.
Here.
Mr. Feldman.
Here.
Then Shaw.
Present.
Tonight, we have the prayer and pledge allegiance by Councilman Feldman.
Please stand. Prior to our prayer, you know, we pray for our leaders. I'd like to have a moment of silence, followed by a long time since I've heard about. Dear Emily Fox, I want to thank you for your plan. We are thankful for the authority that you have given for leaders of all levels, protection and guidance. Today, we ask that you would give all our leaders, government leaders, spiritual leaders, metaphor leaders, wisdom, strength, and results. Keep each one of them healthy and safe, so that they can continue to guide us through this. Please give each one of us our civic leaders the inspiration, courage, and strength beneath the needs of the Stow community. If you still think you're better. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under our individual liberty and justice law.
You know, we said this one year in our Committee as a whole, but I know we all need to speak clearly into our microphones and not speak over each other. The next item on our agenda is disposition of minutes, we do not have any to approve. The next item is the reading of communication, I was in touch with Clerk Villers multiple times today, even though she's out of office. We did not receive any public comment or any communication from the public before this meeting. Our committee reports, we did not have any committees meeting tonight except Committee as a whole, and there is one item on the agenda. City officials report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Harrison. Just a quick one this evening, I encourage residents to keep calling in, it has been fantastic. We've had questions ranging from, "Can I get food?", "I'm food insecure?", and we've been able to take care of that. Questions on religious services, are they being livestreamed? Questions about mental health services. Small businesses concerned about closing. And large businesses concerned, how do they handle one, are they essential? We've had people call about their 401Ks even, out of concern. And bottom line is, people are concerned. And we all have to do good at this time, be kind to our neighbor, and of course, we'll get through this. Earlier this week here, I sent out to City Council a freezing of all capital expenditures. Reason being is, talking with Mr. Earl and Mr. Costello. We're not sure where we're going to be. Bottom line is, we've extended that tax deadline now till July 15. That's three months, just like the federal government has had. We need to look at things such as, will we get and we won't the same amount of payroll tax that usually comes in? Property tax, fortunately, it was collected back in February, but we're not sure with the housing market, will people be able to afford in July the property tax? So there's many things, there are many, many unknowns, that I really don't think, speaking to both gentlemen, that we really won't see a big picture or a clear picture, at least until probably September. Surprisingly enough, but that's probably where we're going to be looking, it could be longer than that. So that's why this was implemented. There's been questions about. Information received, the city and other government entities, this is kind of different in our time of our lives, are receiving the same timely news as everyone else. That's good and bad, but that's, we're getting our news almost about the same time as everybody else. Please keep contacting myself and city staff, who are always here and happy to talk to, talk to you and find out an answer if we can get it for you. There's a lot of great things going on though in the City of Stowe, many people helping each other out, checking on their neighbor, and I still recommend, please, doing that, reach out to your neighbor. I know we can't, go ahead and we have to stay six feet apart, make sure that they're okay, whether they're young or old. Chalk art is crazy around the community, and it's really uplifting people's spirits. I know everybody has cabin fever right now, it's kind of weird that we have cabin fever with it today, it's 65 and sunny. So, bottom line is, the City of Stowe right now is strong financially, we want to keep it that way, all of you want to keep, keep it that way. And we're happy to serve our residents, and remember together, we are all in this together. Thank you.
I know that Mr. Costello had sent a finance report out earlier to all of us, if you did not get that, please reach out to him. And he also was reporting to Mr. Earl. In an ordinance with having not a lot of people here, Mr. Wren, you are next.
Thank you, Mrs. Harrison. Just one thing to piggyback on what the mayor said, I believe Linda sent it to all of City Council this afternoon. We do have a COVID-19 resource page now on our website, that adds local resources for people to take advantage of. So, please feel free to reach out and look at that page and see if there's some helpful information, or if there's more information that someone has that we can add to the page, we're happy to do that as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. McIntyre.
Thank Mr. Wren for your bureau report today, the update, the current state of the city and emergency and everything.
Any other questions for Mr. Wren? We had one item that I wanted to bring up under new business, I would like to make a motion to cancel the meeting scheduled for 3/31/2020, as we have passed our budget, we do not need a meeting next week. Mr. Brown.
When you get a chance in the meeting, I had Chief Stone come here this evening, and Chief Film, for a real quick update of what's going on with the COVID-19. So whenever you want to insert that, that is.
Let's go ahead, and we got a motion and second on the floor to cancel the meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Yes. No, abstentions. Our meeting on March 31st has been canceled. Chief Film, would you like to give us an update?
I'm actually gonna allow Chief Stone to go first, that's what I meant.
Sure.
Thank you, Chief Film. I'll give you an update as to where we are, a little background as well, if you don't mind. The Stowe Fire Department has been working many hours each day to address the COVID-19 pandemic and its potential effect on our community. With this in mind, we have determined that we need a mitigation plan to follow, and we've been working on its many facets, which actually tend to change a lot daily, sometimes hourly. The pandemic influenza mitigation plan serves as a guide for us, it's a predetermined guide of actions in mitigation, preparation, response, and recovery from pandemic influenza. We're learning a lot of things as we move through this past few weeks. A major assumption of a pandemic outbreak is the difficulty in maintaining fire emergency medical service operations, and considering a large portion of the personnel that may become ill. Therefore, the goals that we have put in this plan are to limit personnel exposure and disease transmission, maintain an essential level of service and the continuity of operations, maintain the public's confidence and safety. This type of viral outbreak is one like we've never seen before, it requires cooperation on many fronts, including all levels of government and members of the public. Another interesting facet is that those of us in emergency medical services are also leaning heavily on our police officers for support and sharing of resources. You may have noticed earlier this week that both the police and both the Stowe Police and Fire Departments have reached out to the public via social media for supplies, as our cupboards are becoming bare. We, the Fire Department supplies, the Police Department, all of their personal protective equipment that is similar to ours on the medical side of things, and it drains the resources quite readily when you have a pandemic such as this hit. This has led to a huge outpouring, this request for supplies has led to a huge outpouring from the public, who have provided clothes, surgical masks, and 95 masks, which are needed for day night, day operations. who have provided clothes, surgical masks, N95 masks, which are needed for day night, day operations. And a local sewing guild, which my neighbor Jennifer belongs to, started making these masks that we can use on our patients. We use them over the top of our N95 masks that are rare and hard to find. And we have received quite a number of them from her. She's promised me, Chief Film, a very special one. We will be able to deal with that another time. They can be used by our police departments, our paramedics, and they can be placed on the patients also to help reduce transmission of disease. It was kind of nice, actually, on Sunday, I believe it was, she walked up with one of these and to my door. And her husband handed me all his dust masks that he had from his drywalling days. The Stowe Police and Stowe Fire Department have turned to daily operations meetings at 9:00 every morning, so we can provide each agency with status updates and report our supply inventories. In addition to these meetings, Summit County Public Health and Summit County Emergency Management Agency hold twice daily conference calls with our agencies to keep everyone in the loop as to the status of our county and our local supplies. The amount of information that's been pouring in is incredible. It requires a team to digest also. We're leaning heavily on our neighbors also, to the east, west, north, and south of us. We're contacting them for assistance with locating equipment and vendors who may have much needed personal protective equipment. Those of you who have taken the National Incident Management System course, which I've been asking you to complete, and I'm not going to say names, you might understand some of this a little bit more than others, that the federal government, all the way down to the local government, has a framework in which we operate under in times of crisis. Although the system seems like a lot of paperwork to communicate, it's very essential to bring a wide array of disciplines and agencies together to work towards all the crises such as the one we're in now. Part of the federal government's contribution to the pandemic are much needed medical supplies. The strategic national stockpile was opened up earlier this week. 25% of the strategic national stockpile was released. Ohio received their portion of it and delivered 80% of what they received to communities on a per capita basis, not having anything to do with the need of the community, but rather just the generic per capita basis, which has been their plan all along. Summit County, where all the hospitals, all the fire departments, and safety forces received five pallets of materials. Sounds pretty good, but when you actually saw what we received, it was very small, because we have to feed the hospitals who are really in dire straits as well. Today, we received our proportion of the personal protective equipment from this push. Now, I'll just give you a real quick rundown of what we received. One box of small gloves, seven boxes of medium gloves, three large boxes, lots of large gloves, one box of extra large gloves. We got 27 gallons, which we are desperately needing. 170 surgical masks, which we are almost out of. Surgical masks with eye protection, we got six of those. 86 of the elusive M95 masks that you hear a lot about these days, and we've got 18 dust masks. We also have learned to reach out to unusual resources that somebody actually suggested on Facebook, and that was, we reached out to our school system. And Rob Dass, the Director of Operations for Stowe City Schools, Stoneman Falls Schools, brought to us today 30 of their goggles that we use in the science lab, that we are able to clean, disinfect, and use for our personnel whenever they're doing procedures. Whenever we get somebody a treatment, we have to assume that those vapors are going to get back into our eyes, and we need to have goggles on. So we're very appreciative of the schools for that. Our numbers, the latest numbers from the state of Ohio are, as of 5:00 today, 867 cases in the state, 223 hospitalizations, 15 deaths. The latest numbers from Summit County are a little different than what you're going to see on the website. We have 51 cases. 30 long-term care facilities or nursing homes in our county have this infection inside that county, inside those facilities. We had one death. You won't see it on our website from the state yet, but Chief Film told us earlier today, you might be reporting on this as well and learn of that death as well. It's been determined that after looking at models of the spread, that we should see a spike in cases statewide in about seven days. And as of today, also, you might already know that the U.S. has surpassed all other countries in the world with the number of cases in our country. We actually sent one of our firefighters to the hospital to be tested for COVID-19. We were fortunate that, you know, he was displaying the signs and symptoms. And under the direction of our Dr. Amy, you know, we have the state Dr. Amy Act, we have our own Dr. Amy, Dr. Amy Rottenall. And she thought that if he would qualify for a testing, and we were fortunate, I know that although he had signs and symptoms, he was negative. We received that news yesterday. The Fire Department has modified our operations initially, also with the intent to change as the spread of the virus widens. We have sent home those who are able to work remotely, our business billing clerk, who all her work is done in the cloud. And also Melissa Adams, or firefighter Mel, who's been creating online lesson plans for the children who are working, learning remotely from home. Firefighter Mel did all her lesson plans through the school systems and sent the principals, who disseminated them through their teachers. Their normal plan, they would be just like here. Our Fire Prevention Bureau has scaled back operations, but they're fielding many calls from business owners who need advice. We're not planning on shutting down. They need to know how to shut down and what they need to do before they shut down. And so they've fielded a lot of those. They've actually been busier than we expected. They've also completed any scheduled inspections, but they're not adding any moves on that are not necessary. We have prepared our personnel for staffing changes also, that might require them to give up regularly scheduled days off during the state of emergency and as things begin to heat up. And speaking of temperatures, we are requiring all of our personnel, we have now to take their temperature at the beginning of their shift. They walk in the door, they have to walk through the bathroom, wash their hands, take their temperature. We have an app that one of our students provides, that they can just enter it on their phone or on a computer. And we have a data base of all of our temperatures at 7:30 in the morning as well as 7:30 at night. And that's pretty much my report.
Any questions for Chief Stone? In your microphone. In your mic, Mr. Altieri.
Chief, the masks that they made on that material, then, would you take it home, wash, reuse again?
Yes, they can be. And she talked to me extensively before she started making them and found out, the sewing guild that she found out had done some research, or somebody had done research on type of material, that they found cotton was the most effective. And this particular one is a City of Hudson teacher, one of my employees, kind of funny. But they use that material there and then a different type of material on the outside. Those two layers are almost as effective as an N95. She put paper clip in here to form it around your nose, to seal it even better, and has two models that she's created.
Wow. I understand Joanne Fadens is giving material to people to make masks.
Yes, I believe they also had plans out. This might actually be one of the plans from the internet. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Stone? Mr. McIntyre.
Yeah, with the supplies that you just received, I mean, how far are those going to take you? I guess, what are you going to be looking at to say, hey, we're going to be needing more? What's the timeline of the season?
We actually requested those supplies, it was Tuesday, from the EMA. That was our deadline to make our request. And those supplies are essentially a bit of a drop in the bucket. I think that, you know, obviously, any little bit helps. I don't have a tally for you of what the community has donated so far, but substantial. And we were fortunate enough, yesterday, Mark Anderson was able to locate, I'm trying to think, I think it was N95 masks from Bass and All, who was only selling to safety forces and hospitals. 3M and Bass and All got together, and they pulled back all their stock that would normally go to the public and decided to sell to us. So we have a four-week supply from Bass and All that should be here next week, as well as after four weeks surpasses. If we still need another four weeks, they'll send us that. I received a phone call from a buddy of mine in Tidings County, living in masks, they can't give them to us. But he knew of a source, unusual source up in New York State that had surgical masks. So we were able to buy 500 surgical masks from a company that doesn't normally sell them also. So we're piecing it all together.
Do you see what you have, what you have now from Bass and All? Can you get us four weeks?
That'll get us four weeks. And we do have a supply right now that, about four weeks supply. What we're looking at, we can't see the end of this yet, and everywhere, all of our vendors are saying they can't give us the date. A lot of the dates don't start till the end of May or beginning of June, well, with our peak being expected, beginning to ramp up a week from now, and our peak being expected mid to late April, we're going to grab whatever we can get our hands on and prepare for the worst. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Stone? Chief Film? In your microphone as well as your camera.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Chief Stone, the report was very thorough, and I'm only going to touch on two additional things. We are meeting with Department of Health twice a day, in person and phone conversations. And including in that is the hospitals, the Chiefs Association, the Fire Association, EMA, Coroner's Office, the Mayor's Association, the Trustees Association. And one thing that we're dealing with right now, from a law enforcement standpoint and Summit County Health, is that we're getting a lot of calls on non-incentral businesses, whether they're essential or not. And we have been directed, both by the county governor and by the Summit County Public Health Department, that we are not to attempt to determine whether or not a business is essential. They are to self-assess, and they will be held responsible at some point down the road, whether or not they are in the central business. We are getting a lot of call up on that, and that is just not what, in our, you know, we're hopeful and Summit County Public Health is well out. What we are looking at is whether or not businesses is complying with the, with the social distancing as far as whether or not, you know, the six-foot rule, whether or not they are supplying enough sanitation device material for their employees. We have had several calls about the use playing basketball, football, gatherings. We will, as a law enforcement agency, block those locations and encourage the group to disperse. There is not going to be any charges or anything, or any reports of that nature. Businesses that we do find are operating in violation of the stay-at-home rule, we will document and send them reports to the Public Health Department for prosecution. Our goal is to warn any business initially. If we do receive complaints, then we could cite also Mr. Mayor of Second Degree with an issue of summons. We've had questions about our golf course, and today I contacted the Public Health Department. There was more than one person writing in the car, we found that they were family members, they were actually down there golfing. The Department of Health ruled that that's not a violation because they live together. So, it's been a real tough thing, tried to investigate and determine who's in violation, who's not in violation. We're not asking our residents to call in on neighbors who have friends over. It's just, it's not enforceable. We ask all people to, if they do not have the stay-at-home guidelines, they're online, and that they do look at that and they try to hear to that as best as possible. And with that, I'll hand over any questions.
Any questions for Chief Film? Mr. McIntyre.
So as far as, I mean, I see a lot of chatter on social media, overall, the parks are being, I see what you're saying, people play basketball. And it seems like I read an email to, right now, you guys are doing more of an education piece, and these kids are engaging in those kind of activities where they're not enforcing social distancing, they just disperse. I mean, overall, how are the park facilities, are they being utilized?
Yes, I can personally say that I think they're being, they're being utilized by, and from a most part, people are keeping distance away. I mean, obviously, if somebody's walking with their bride or their children, they're together, they're not, you know, they're not required to, that's what you will. So far, what we've seen, we only have a few complaints, and we've investigated them.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Film? Any other items to come under new business? We'll move on to the disposition of ordinances and resolutions. The first item we have is 20-33. This was the rezoning on Graham Road. This item was to have a public hearing tonight. However, being we cannot have the public in, we are not having a public hearing for that. I spoke with Mr. Hertz on this item, and we are pushing that item back to April 23rd as of right now. And we will have to reevaluate as we get closer to that date, whether April 23rd is feasible for a public meeting. The next ordinance we have is ordinance 20-43 regarding amending 331.38 stopping for school buses. Being with everything else we have going on right now, and school's not in session, I would entertain a motion to table that item for the moment.
So move.
Second.
That is, item has been moved and seconded to table. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
No, it's extensions. That item will be tabled. The next item we have is ordinance 20-57. This was for EECom Technical Services. I believe this legislation got through on accident after we had passed this and we had found out the state was actually going to pay their portion directly. So there became a little bit of confusion, because our clerk was not here that night. I spoke at the law department today. And we actually need to make a motion to adopt this, and then we need to fail it, so it can go away, because it is currently out there pending legislation. So I will make a motion to suspend the rules on 20-57.
Okay.
All those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Yes, no, it's extensions. That item has been, the rules have been suspended. I would move to adopt 20-57.
Okay.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Harrison.
No.
Mr. Hyler.
No.
Mr. McIntyre.
No.
Mr. Altieri.
No.
Mr. Fioka.
No.
Mr. Feldman.
No.
Ms. Shaw.
No.
20-57 is failed and off of our legislative agenda. The next item we have is item 2020-59. This is for the approval of a 2020 Budget Oversight Committee. Will the clerk please read it by its title?
An ordinance establishing the 2020 Budget Oversight Committee specifying the powers and duties thereof and declaring an emergency.
I would move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Yes, no, it's extensions. The rules have been suspended. I would move to adopt.
Second.
Although, the clerk, please call the, or the discussion, discussion on this item. Mr. Feldman.
Just so I'm clear, if the special committee that would report the plan in?
They would report back to council. It would just, would be a special committee like the rest of our standing committees.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Hyler.
Yes. I think, I think in light of the situation, declining revenues, and some of the challenges we're going to face around charged waters, and I think that this is the right thing to do. I think I will take my micromanage and trust on it. Hopefully, we're improving our communication and improving our oversight, and I think it would be a very, very positive thing. So, I'm all for it.
Thank you, Mr. Hyler.
Ms. Shaw. I was speaking with Mr. Costello and a couple other, a couple others. I am against this special committee, and I will tell you the reason why, it's never been done before. I feel it's micromanaging. And I am against it. I don't understand. I mean, I understand what you're saying, and you for it, but we should have enough faith in people that are already on the finance committee instead of forming others.
Mr. McIntyre.
Well, I mean, the legislation, it's not creating a subcommittee on the finance committee, it's a separate committee from that. So it's all members, it wouldn't have to report to the finance committee. So I agree with Mr. Hyler that it's, you know, where we're at, we're in an uncertain territory, so this has much support. Thank you.
Ms. Shaw.
Am I correct? The finance committee, they do the budget. They still have the budget?
They do.
So in other words, this is a subcommittee, and it may not be actually called a committee, but it is a subcommittee.
No, it's a special standing committee. Mr. Hyler.
Yes. I think that you all know, I gave a report this week, asked by the mayor to check on some matters with regards to financing of some local businesses. And I was, it's kind of fluid, fluid inspection with people I've talked to, particularly banking. And right now in banking, a lot of things are happening that are very favorable to businesses. And it's, they're being very cool and being very touch with customers. They understand what's going on, and even more importantly, the regulators understand what's going on. This is an ideal time. And generally, when times run right now, what happens is there's a tendency to kind of pick your eye off the ball and certain things. Things can get in the back door. For example, like, when I spoke with the mayor today, one of the things I'm concerned about, there's nothing to do with finance per se, because we have 10, and it is IT. I think this is, right now, is a time where our IT I think this is, right now, is a time where our IT, we get tested, our, uh, information systems. Um, and so, perhaps, I think if we're going to this time as we watch the fine revenues, I view this as all the answer to that. And again, President Harrison is actually chair of the committee, and, uh, and I think everybody knows that I'm a communicator and, uh, very accessible, and very much want to work with you, and very much want to work with finance, want to work with people, I want to work with all of you, so everybody in the world, when we're, when we're talking about think so speak, and, uh, uh, it's, and it's, uh, one of those things, there's never one answer. I think in the report I gave, it's called little victories, and that's the whole thing, is wherever we go through, uh, in the city, it's going to be a series of little victories. It'll be things like, um, you know, make, uh, you have to spend money thinking it through three, four times, but, yeah, I hope that this, meet sunsets, and once, when silence is called off, this thing will sunset, and they go back to normal. This is just, um, this is just tech oversight, but when we get through this, it's not, we dictate what, what's going to take place. It's to work with people, make sure that everything's on the table, and I'm sure that there are wants and needs that everybody wants in the city, who works for the city, and we want support, but at the same time, we have to have a balanced budget when we get done. And at the beginning of the situation, we're going to have to focus on debt at the end. Um, then, you know, we can live with it, and I think the other thing, it's more important than anything else, we have a double A plus rate, I forget if I said that right. We have double A plus rate. That's huge. I mean, that's the kind of thing when I was in back, I would, I would invest in double A plus municipality. Uh, and people look at useful bonds, which is very safe investments. But, you know, in 2008, we saw when people were launching, we weren't such good investments in some communities, and I think there were even some failures at that time. We want to make sure we're not part of that. We want to make sure that we're, we can go back and say we're diligent, we're diligent, and so I totally understand something being, I totally understand something being against us, uh, but at the same time, uh, I think in the situation that we're in, based on my experience, I think it's a good idea to be, to be handled right, and I can make my guarantee to the council that I'll handle this thing.
Mr. Feldman?
Madam President, very quickly, um, so another set of eyes on numbers at this call time, and chaired by Mr. Hyler.
We have to pass it before I can appoint anybody?
Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to kind of, you know, piggyback off Mr. Hyler, too. This is looking at more than, you know, there's a lot of, uh, capital, you know, projects that are going to be put on hold. Uh, you know, people are going to want their roads saved, and this is going to give an opportunity to really, I guess, work with the administration, Mr. Wren, prioritize a list, you know, you know, Mr. Hyler's right, it's, it's going to be wants and needs, and what do we need, and what do we want, and kind of really prioritizing that. So I, I, I look forward to see whatever kind of, uh, information comes out of this committee, whoever, uh, whoever sits on it, but again, I'm as bold supportive of it.
Ms. Shaw?
Mr. Hyler, I don't want you to think that there's anything personal towards you because I know that you're an expert in this field. My next question is, I understand that you cannot appoint anybody to be committing unless it's passed. Um, my question to you is, are the people going to be different if it gets passed, uh, the subcommittees and it is on the primary?
You'll have to see who I appoint if we pass it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? The clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Hyler?
Yes.
Mr. McIntyre?
Yes.
Mr. Altieri?
Yes.
Mr. Fioka?
Yes.
Mr. Feldman?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
No.
The motion is passed. We've created a special 2020 Budget Oversight Committee. I'll tell you, I did reach out to Mr. Hyler and ask him if he'd be interested in chairing this. I think based on all the comments he just made, I think everybody probably understands why. He's seen banks through the banking crisis in 2008. I think he's the right person to chair it, so I would like Mr. Hyler to chair this. I would actually like Mr. Altieri to be the, the vice chair of this. Mr. Altieri, you have a lot of years in small business here in Stowe, and I think that's a lot of insights and a lot of concerns we're going to have, is a lot of our small businesses and what, what kind of resources can we help connect them to. I'd also ask Mr. Feldman to be on this committee, and then Mr. McIntyre to be on this committee. I think you're both deeply invested in Stowe. Mr. McIntyre has a background in capital projects. I think it's a very diverse group that can do a lot of things to help move this forward. So that was all the items on our disposition of ordinances and resolution. I would entertain a motion to pay the bills.
So move.
Okay.
All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
No, it's extensions. The bills have been paid. Um, I don't think we're going to schedule any pending committee meetings at this moment until we understand what we're doing with our next meeting, is we have some more items to research to better have a live streaming meeting or a virtual meeting. We're still looking into those kinds of resources. And so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I apologize. The clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Hyler?
Yes.
Mr. McIntyre?
Yes.
Mr. Altieri?
Yes.
Mr. Fioka?
Yes.
Mr. Feldman?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
We are adjourned.